Welcome, everybody, to our Planning Commission meeting for the City of Tumwater for Tuesday, January 24, 2023. The meeting is called to order. I'll call the roll. And Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Commissioner Schumacher?
Here.
Commissioner Sheldon and Vice Chair Sheldon?
Here.
Commissioner Tobias?
Here.
Commissioner Verrell?
Here. Sorry.
Commissioner Van Holtz is excused. And lastly, me, Commissioner Roberts. All right. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No.
Onto approval of our minutes from our joint session with the City Council from December 13th. Any remarks?
Mrs. Megan?
I'll second.
Commissioner Schumacher making the motion and seconded by. Any other remarks? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes from our joint session with the City Council from December 13th, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay, motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Let's go to Commissioners' reports. Anything you'd like to bring up? Brad, Managers' report.
I will keep it short. We've hired a planner. Now she just has to start working. Her name is Erica Smith Erickson. She is currently employed by the city, not the Thurston County, as an associate planner. She's been with them for about five or six years. She will be coming over officially on February 16th. So your second meeting in February, we'll be able to introduce her. I think you'll like her. The comment that we had after the interview, all three of us, was that we asked the question and she answered the question behind the question, which was really good. So I'm really excited to bring her in forward.
Congratulations on making that hire. She sounds like a real great candidate. Let's see, let's go to general public comment. Does anybody here or online? I'll go through in the room first. Does anybody here from the public want to? General Matters? Nope. Is there anybody online? There's a Jolt member? I can't see a name, but that's. Welcome, Jolt. Would you like to address the Planning Commission? And if so, would you say your name? Go ahead.
Hello, I would just like to attend the meeting and I don't have any comments.
All righty, thanks much. Thanks for being here. Okay, let's go to item number eight, our preliminary docket for the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And Brad, if you can lead us off on that, that'd be great.
So the action for you tonight, and this is in terms of what you see in your packet, is if you feel comfortable with the list of preliminary items on that docket, that you forward a recommendation to the City Council to consider that recommendation at their February meetings. So let's move it up a month. The preliminary docket this year is limited to only public projects. The City Council approved a resolution last fall that basically put all private applications on hold until we finish the larger comprehensive plan update process. However, there are still things that we need to have approved before we get the update done. We have, the first item is the Capital Facilities Plan. Every other year, the budget is approved by the City Council as a annual budget. On the off-budget years, we do the Capital Facilities Plan. Capital Facilities Plan is basically the city putting the money towards those items to put all the things that we say we want to do in the comp plan into action. It funds transportation, utility improvements, park improvements, and all of those things over a six-year period. Our intent this year, I've reached out to the various departments that are going to be contributing to the document to have opportunities for them to talk about what's in the plan and have more discussion time if possible. I know, Terry, you've asked for, you know, maybe a lunchtime sessions of some sort to do that. I requested that they think about that and we'll get that on the schedule to do that as part of the final docket process. The second item that's on the preliminary docket that the staff is recommending go forward is the recently finished Highway 99, Old Highway 99 Plan, which is primarily transportation-oriented. Because of the amount of growth that we're getting in the area, you know, there's a whole series of things that we need to do to improve 99 to accommodate not only all the growth that we anticipate internally, but all the people that are coming into the city on 99, you know, causing, you know, there's backups and everything else. So we're looking at a series of improvements and that plan sort of lays out the whole process by which that, the transportation side was developed. The plan itself does not make any changes on the land use side. All of the things that we have said in the comp plan that we wanted to do in that area remain. In fact, we'll probably add to it on the part of the comp plan as part of this process. But we really didn't have a land use component as part of this plan. It's mostly a transportation plan. But again, staff is recommending both of those items go forward as part of the preliminary docket. If you have any specific questions on those things, or you think there are specific things that you would like to have addressed as part of the final docket discussion, please email me or you can let me know now, specific issues.
Mr. Tobias?
So for the Old Highway 99 corridor, are there any, I know this is more of a community-level question, but are there any routes currently served by intercity transit for those areas?
No. And that, thank you for bringing that up, because that's another thing that I want to mention that we'll be trying to address more as part of the comprehensive plan update process. We had a good meeting last fall with, there's a whole bunch of new staff at intercity transit. That's good, because that means they have the capacity now to do a lot of planning with us. And we talked about two things. One, when, what are the triggers for getting transit service down 99? Because currently, we only go as far as Israel on Capitol Boulevard. And also, the Little Rock corridor, because Israel and Little Rock are, at that interchange, that's the extent of transit service. But as you're probably aware, we're getting a lot of growth down both of those axes. And so we're definitely, they're interested, we're interested, we're just trying to see if what we need to do or prove that we have the transit ridership to extend services.
Are there any, there are no, whether intercity transit or any other form of public transit or mass transit from, say, like to 90 to Tumwater, or there's no?
No. When the intercity transit was originally set up, it covered the entire county. However, I, at some point in the past, it was actually pulled back to the four major cities. So intercity transit really doesn't have authority or, you know, the ability to say, yeah, we would like to serve to 90. They serve Yelm, but the other cities and the other county urban growth areas, they don't serve. It's outside of their jurisdiction to serve them.
Other questions? I have a little bit of a question, still on the Old Highway 99 corridor plan. And that has to do with, as I just was mentioning, Brad, kind of the context. I'm just not familiar enough with the plan to have, to have that context of how much growth and kind of precisely where, and especially in relation to the rest of Tumwater, and where, you know, kind of, how would that affect any kind of investment choices that the City Council will ultimately make as a result of that plan compared to other places in the city? So I think it will be important to have that kind of, that kind of context included in the plan. It probably already has some of it, and I'm just not familiar enough to know that right now. But it'd be good to have that and to, also a discussion of, you know, what the total value or cost of the recommended improvements would be and where the money is anticipated to come from, and that kind of thing, just so people get a fuller sense of where that fits in to the overall scheme. And while the plan may not address land use per se, it still supports the land use and the proposed land use and growth out there. So I think that's still wrapped up in there. So those are some general comments that I hope to see.
So a couple very quick responses to that. Number one, the Highway 99 corridor is a major growth area for the city. We're obviously getting a lot of new single-family housing along 93rd in that area. We're definitely filling out the commercial and industrial areas all along Highway 99. And also, we're getting a lot of spillover from, you know, people living in the county coming in to the city as part of that. So it definitely is on the radar as a priority development area. I will, I also will be bringing in Mary Heather Ames, who is our Transportation Manager, who was leading the project, and she'll be going through the details of the plan. This is also where we tie it back into the Capital Facilities Plan and all of that, and what things are going to go forward first and where the money's coming from.
There's a question about the docket here.
Yeah.
It says that we approve this, it goes to the City Council for a work session in Mark, if you're saying technical right now?
If the Planning Commission feels it has sufficient information to make a recommendation, we can move it up.
Okay. And then it says, coming back to us for final amendments in July, is that moved up as well, do you think?
Probably not, because of the background work we have for the Capital Facilities Plan. That's really gonna, there's a bit of work that we need to get done first before we can start that process.
Got it.
So any discussion about content and/or any discussion about the suggestion to go ahead and recommend it move up? We would need an action for that latter thing. Mr. Schumacher?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary docket as written and forward to the City Council.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Tobias, I'll second that motion.
Excellent. It's been moved and seconded that we advance the preliminary docket for the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments to the city. Any other discussion on that? All righty. Let's go, let's take it up. All in favor of the motion to advance our preliminary docket for the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Amendments to the City Council, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Very good, motion passes. Brad? Youhoo, we moved forward a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're gonna kind of free-flow this one. The next discussion topic is, I wanted to follow up on your joint meeting with the Tree Board earlier this month on both the tree preservation ordinance and also the street tree plan. First, let's talk about the tree preservation ordinance and the gap analysis. Number one, I wanted to make sure that your questions were answered as part of the session, or after you've had the opportunity to think through the presentation that Watershed gave, and take a time to review the materials a little bit more, and also the Buryan example that I sent you. If you had any specific questions or, you know, things that you thought we should be exploring further or need to add, those kinds of things. So let's start with that, and if there are specific questions, I'll see if I can answer them as well as I can remember, or we'll dig into some of the information as we need to.
Is that, are we doing just the preservation regulation or also the street tree?
We'll start with the tree preservation and then we'll do the street tree.
Very good, okay. Any points for Brad? Mr. Tobias?
More of a general arborist question. What qualified a tree is old growth and do we have any, like, old growth in, so are street trees, not street trees, urban forests in Tumwater primarily new and middle-growth trees?
No, I would characterize that, we don't have old growth in the city anymore. We're probably on second, if we're lucky, second growth is our old growth, meaning that what was originally cut down in the 1850s onwards, the next round, if you see really old trees, that's probably that. More likely, we're probably on third growth. You know, the initial harvest, they're growing again, and then, you know, cutting down for new development. So we're pretty far, you know, in terms of the age of the species of the trees in the city, pretty young. The old growth would be found mostly on the Olympic Peninsula in very isolated pockets. And he would recognize them because they're gigantic.
Commissioner Verella?
Hey, Brad, the question I had asked last week, an email on that, I don't know if this is the right position for that question, and regarding the preservation, is there any accounting for removing trees to install solar panels or green renewable energies? Is there any kind of offset or correlation between the two?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. We're working on that right now with staff. We have some existing language in the code already to sort of deal with some situations where we have conflicts between, you know, solar panels being installed and then vegetation growth. I do think we're gonna have to think through how we might want to do a little bit more detail as part of the tree preservation ordinance, but that's something we'll probably include as part of the actual ordinance.
Thank you.
Other questions or remarks? Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
I felt that reading through and listening to the sessions that we had, that I didn't see any of the nursery folks represented on any of the advisory panels. And if we spend a whole bunch of time and effort on picking the right tree for the right place, and the nursery people haven't been consulted such that they can stock that tree, then it seems to me we're gonna run into a stone wall when we get there.
I agree with, and that's a valid concern. The one, and I'll mention that to the Watershed group, is something we need to bring into the conversation. The concern I have is when we go start talking about replacement trees, and then if, you know, we have an existing standard of two-year-old trees or, you know, excuse me, two-inch trees at rest height as a replacement tree, well, that's a common nursery availability issue. They're far more likely to stock that than something bigger. And my concern is, I want to make sure that, you know, if we have a bigger requirement for replacement trees, you know, the issue being that we don't want to see twigs out there. Are they really out there to buy? And what's the cost? Because there's a substantial cost difference between buying one-inch, two-inch, and something bigger. So I think that's a good concern and I may note it.
Any other questions, remarks on the preservation portion? Thank you, go.
The short answer is, we're now onto the develop the ordinance side of the equation. So we're going to, we have a presentation with general government in February to talk about stakeholder process that we just finished. We had three meetings with the folks who are outside of the city of residents, property owners. We had our first of two internal meetings already with the staff at the city. We only had one meeting with the staff, we only needed one meeting with the staff. So we finished that process, we finished the survey, we finished all of those things, plus gap analysis and the feedbacks that we received. So we've got a lot to report to the general government. They definitely have expressed an interest in where we are in the process and would like a full report of where we are in the process, so we'll be giving them that information. Because we've told them and they have asked us repeatedly to make sure that they know what we're doing, so we don't go off on a tangent that they're not aware of or don't support. So, you know, that's really sort of the check-in to make sure councils, yeah, this is what we wanted, you're in the ballpark, keep going. So that's our next step for tree preservation. And then I think we have another meeting with the Planning Commission and the Tree Board before we give you the actual ordinance. So we'll probably give you our direction in terms of the language we're going to be doing. And it looks like we're going to be, we discussed the tree credit approach for managing and replacing trees and all of that, rather than the tree canopy approach. It just seems to work a little bit better for us because of staffing and ease of understanding and describing what we're doing. I don't want to spend a half hour explaining something if I don't only half-understand myself. So we'll do that. There's a bit of tweaking that we'll need to do, I think, for our circumstances. Some of the examples, like the Buryan example that I provided to you, are for already-developed communities, meaning that most of their lands are already subdivided, they already have some level of development on them, they're in a redevelopment situation. We're still really, well, we're coming to the end of it, but we're still in the, you know, lots of land in the subdivide, you know, green fields to develop, those kinds of things, which is a different situation when it comes to tannoy tree replacement. They're also, their existing lots in Buryan are probably a little bit bigger than what we're getting now through new development, which means they can handle more trees on the individual lots. And a big concern that I have is I don't want to, I think it's important that we have trees on individual residential lots, new development, but we shouldn't over-plant, because the key point is, in 20 years' time, what is it gonna look like? Is it going to be breaking up the sidewalks, is it gonna interfere with, you know, utilities and all this other stuff? If the lots are big enough, you have a little more space to do that. On small lots, it's sort of like you've got one choice of where to put a tree to have it function well and be healthy at the end of 20 years. So I just want to make sure we deal with those kinds of issues.
Just a quick question on timing, or really, will the Tree Board will be probably more closely engaged on developing the language of the ordinance with?
It will be very much a joint process with Planning Commission and Tree Board. The key thing to understand is for the Tree Board, their mission is more trees. Planning Commission's message, Planning Commission's duty is, okay, how does this work with everything else we've got? And does it work as ordinance language, does it work as regulatory language? And thinking of it in those terms. So, no, it's really gonna be both of you going together, because ultimately, the Planning Commission is responsible for having the public hearing on the ordinance, and so they really should be involved in the development and of the ordinance language itself.
I appreciate that. Mr. Tobias?
So looking at the climate change resilience plan, I was curious about how does the city, what kind of metrics does the city use to compare the impact of light industrial development versus, you know, multifamily residential development? So for example, in the Tumwater-Little Rock Road subarea, I'm guessing that refers to the acres of trees on the, is that the south end of Israel or going towards Little Rock Road or is that further south, Little Rock?
The Little Rock subarea plan covers everything from about the Trosper-Little Rock interchange all the way down to, south of Israel to Tumwater Boulevard. So that whole, you know, commercial, heavy, you know, that area is the Little Rock subarea.
That's what I was figuring, because there's a good mix there of, you know, some multifamily high, multifamily medium, as well as some light industrial. So how does the city compare the carbon impacts of residential versus industrial usage for those areas? Like, what does, and what do they look like by comparison of what, which has the greater carbon impact in the long term?
Yeah, I think from our standpoint, we really look at land coverage of buildings and parking and other, you know, hard surface development on a site. So really, when we look at both light industrial and the heavier multifamily, they're pretty close in terms of the impacts that they're gonna have on a site. They're gonna use most of the site for buildings, parking, stormwater facilities, that kind of thing. You really don't see a difference unless you start to compare it to, say, the single-family versus light industrial. Single-family is a little bit less intense and everything else. However, initially, for development purposes, it might seem almost the same, because a variety of reasons, you'll have, you know, a site being cleared and then replanted after the fact. So, and also for open space requirements, they're very similar across the districts, because we wanted to ensure that each of those areas had some level of open space attached to the developments. So we didn't have, for heat island reasons and for a variety of other reasons, we wanted to ensure that that was taken care of.
Other remarks? A hand up?
Yes, something that you said a little bit earlier kind of just sparked something in my brain, maybe a little bit off-topic, but I know something that we talked about with the City Council, when we met with them last, was kind of how we can partner with them and kind of do more of that in the coming year. And I know you kind of mentioned them being interested in this, so if there's anything that we can do or, you know, anything that this might be a good learning opportunity or growing opportunity for that, would be really great.
Yeah, no, I will look for those kind of opportunities. The one issue that we have is just, if the City Council doesn't have a lot to do, we could plug them in, because we do have some overlap in times. Their work sessions now start at 6:00, same nights that your sessions start. So we do have the opportunity to look for, say, can we carve out X amount of time from your time and do it at the same time? So that's a good, that's a good opportunity. It's just finding space on their calendars to do that is, I think, the challenging part. But we will start with the general government, you know, three of council members as part of that, and we'll definitely bring that up as a discussion point for them, about, you know, what do you think, here's another thing to think about? Well, do you think this would work? Or maybe just have those three members, again, we have overlap between the meetings, if they have the time to participate in these.
Do you have something, Terry? Okay. We're about to talk. Okay. I think we're good on that.
Okay. The next item is the street tree plan and the gap analysis that was introduced last year. The intent is to have a joint work session with the Tree Board for your February 8th meeting, where similar to what we did at your last meeting, we'll have a discussion going over the gap analysis, doing the various things that Watershed found. We will also be talking, being introduced to the landscape, code changes. SCJ, our other consultant, will be coming in to present that at our February meeting. So just to sort of teaser to get you interested in the next meeting. But if you have any questions or anything that you, we had a short introduction to the gap analysis, if you have any questions after you've had a chance to look through the material, or anything that you think we should be talking about at the joint work session with Tree Board at the February meeting, let me know now and I can make sure that we integrate that together.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
I think something that was left on the table and we were going to discuss it more in more detail is who takes care of the street trees after they're planted, because that's probably the answer to that question is whether they live or not. Because that's probably the answer to that question is whether they live or not.
I think there was an issue about who does that care, you know, to get them, to get the plants established, particularly when it might, when they might be some sort of offset, when they're not planted on the site, they're planted elsewhere?
No, the street's in front of a residence, the street's in front of a business. I mean, who's, who's going to be responsible for doing that? Right now, I believe the city's responsible, but they've got to figure out some way, way in order to say they're no longer responsible.
Right.
Actually, after talking with our city attorney, it's the adjacent property owner who's responsible for the street trees, sidewalks, curb and gutter. Where the city can help, you know, if there's been an ongoing issue, or, you know, we need, there's a bigger neighbor that needs help, that can't afford to do it themselves, the city will, as they have available time and funds, come in and help. But the, the way the ordinance is currently written is the property owner's responsibility to handle the street trees and to do that. So, there's a couple parts to that. There's the new subdivisions that are coming in that have HOAs. And fortunately, the HOAs are responsible for the upkeep of the stormwater facilities, which are complicated, but they're also responsible for the maintenance of any open space in parks and so forth within the development, plus the street trees within, they're, they're helping the property owners deal with that. So, there's two parts to it. There's the adjacent property owner, and then also the larger HOA to be a part of that. There's also then, on the commercial and the industrial side, we do have the ability to, there's the three-month, I mean, three-year period of getting everything going, making sure it's all working bonding process that we have. That, that applies to any development, residential, commercial, industrial. But for larger commercial development, similar to an HOA, they will likely have their own maintenance and upkeep agreements to maintain those, those things as part of their development. That does bring us to the question of how does the city support all of that? And I think as part of the street tree plan language, which is separate from the street tree code, which is in 1224, I think there's some good opportunities to talk about, okay, what does the city really need to do from the incentive, education support side to ensure that what we just said happens? And so, I think that's probably part of the discussion, and where we could, we should, would be a good place to take that.
It's a large part of Tomwater that was thirteen county when it was developed. And so, you're, I don't see how you impose upon people that were, put street trees in under one ordinance and all of a sudden now are part of the city, whether you can retroactively tell them they're responsible for something that they weren't responsible for when they bought the house.
I think you can, but I'll definitely follow up on that question.
Just kind of, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Tobias.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to ask a completely different question, but, so we've seen a growing trend across the US of various localities, particularly desert communities, that are foregoing, you know, the typical manicured lawn in favor of natural restoration, or native plant species in their yards. You know, we're, we're benefited in this part of the Northwest by, you know, pretty substantial amount of rain during the winter months, at least, to keep things green. But is there any sort of, and I'm looking at the list of the certain types of trees that are prohibited, but do we have any sort of incentives or encouragement programs from the city of, you know, to plant certain native species to help restore populations of certain Northwest native vegetation that we'd like to see more of, or? Okay, what does that sort of look like? Is there any sort of?
Well, what I'm thinking, there's two things that I'm thinking about. One, all of the, all of the updates that we're doing, whether it's the tree preservation, street tree, or the landscaping ordinance, we're all going to try to build in to those processes, climate change and the fact that, you know, we're dealing with very hot summers, longer, wetter winters, and, you know, the built, the usual Northwest summer of, hey, we broke seventy, is becoming rarer, and that means there's more stress on the vegetation and our ability to, you know, as you're probably aware, our water usage shoots up during the summer, and our ability to keep doing that is going to be limited in the future. So, definitely like zero escaping and everything else is something we're really trying to, we want to explore, especially with the landscaping ordinance, limiting the need for irrigation, period, unless, you know, for the initial getting everything going stage, we're definitely looking at all that. The issue of the native trees and the changing environment and the changing climate is a tough one, because a lot of the species that we, you know, we think of as good Northwest species and everything else are also under a lot of stress because of the changing weather patterns that we have. And so, we're kind of thinking about what is, what's the next stage? What do we look for? Is it, you know, some modified natives, do we, you know, all that? And definitely, I think, all of the ordinance update process is looking for opportunities to expand the palette, meaning that we don't concentrate on, you know, a few species, we have a lot, you know, sort of like, we know we're going to lose some, we don't know to what, let's try to spread our bets out, kind of approach to things. So, short answer to the complicated question, but all of those things are going to be part of the ongoing discussion. You'll see it as part of, you know, our requirements for, not so much tree preservation, but definitely for street tree planting, you know, how much irrigation are we going to require and what kind, definitely as part of the landscaping. And our, SCJ has really been working a lot on alternatives to dealing with that.
My question is kind of a little bit what, what Commissioner Kepatrick was talking about, but also in general, the, and it's not strictly street trees, but maybe it kind of is woven throughout all of the aspects of our urban forestry management, and that is the notion of, of the forest, you know, and the function of not just the individual tree or a line of trees along a street, but, you know, they're providing habitat for other creatures there, sequestering carbon, they're shading, they might also become hazard trees, or, you know, various other kinds of considerations. So, I guess I'm, I'm always trying to figure out, you know, kind of what's, what's this, can we keep in mind this sort of holistic pattern that we're creating and want to create when we, when we have street trees in, in combination with all the other activities around trees and other vegetation too? So, they're, they form a part of that whole forest, is what I guess I'm trying to say. And I hope we keep that in mind.
Yeah, no, that is definitely something that we've been hearing from the tree board, and we've definitely heard from the council members, about how we, they would like us to approach those issues. The one, you know, we'll, we'll be having some kind of difficult conversations, I think, coming up about what we realistically can do and can't do for tree preservation in an urban area. From my perspective, I would like to see more opportunities for tree tracts that, you know, more than just a single tree of a certain size preserved here and here, scattered across the site, which provides limited habitat value and limited vegetation retention. Now, our, I mean, our, our tree preservation ordinance also says explicitly tree and vegetation preservation. So, the more we can look for opportunities for tree tracts in larger areas that encompass trees or can grow into that, I think that's really important, because it will give us the habitat value as an, you know, as a side effect, much more than preserving an individual tree here, here, and here.
Yes. Mr. Kepatrick.
That really sounds like a great idea. Is there thought about giving a residential developer the option of preserving the grove of trees and skipping the street trees in exchange for?
That's a good suggestion to think about. One of the things, Buryan code has some of this, Lakewood, if you're interested in looking at a brand-new example, just past their most recent update this month of their tree code, I haven't had a chance to really dig into it, but I think that's, it'd be worth your while taking a look at it, and I can find a copy and send it to everybody. I definitely think, I've lost track of your question, so I'm just going to ask politely, what was the question before? Want some more?
But whether there's an option, or to incentivize not just street trees, but groves of trees?
Yeah, well, I mean, you're looking for incentives, and so you want that developer to have an incentive to preserve that growth.
Right.
A significant expense of the developer would be putting street trees in and keeping them alive for two years.
Yeah.
They, they might be quite willing to set aside the grove of trees in exchange for not doing that. And I'm sure it would make the homeowners association happy not to have to take care of them for the next 30 years.
The, the other things that I've seen, that I think are definitely worth discussing further, are a whole host of incentives on the zoning side, meaning on your Balkan-dimensional regulations, additional height for buildings, additional, you know, reduction of setbacks for areas in exchange for preserving additional areas. Because, again, we're trying to fit a lot of things into a very small space. We want to preserve trees, we want to, you know, make sure our stormwater is clean leaving the site, we want to make sure that we actually have enough housing to meet our growth and all that stuff. So, we're going to have to get creative about how all those things are going to fit into a site, and I think the flexibility to mix and match, maybe in some pertinent areas, say, if the tree grove or whatever that's being preserved is up against the street, can we get rid of the street trees? Those kinds of things. I think that's a good, those are good things to look for.
Commissioner Tobias.
Sorry if this is an elementary question. Looking at the stock of the street trees, thirty-three point nine point two, the recommended table with the broadleaf and conifer, caliper height recommendations, what is caliper of a tree? C-A-L-I-P-E-R? Is that caliper, or caliper, is that the thickness of the tree, or is that the?
It's the diameter, the total diameter of the trunk, at breast height, which is about four and a half feet, so right about here.
Okay.
Standing up.
So, these recommendations, the existing one, two to three inches, so that means at time of planting, or, so we want at least like two, two to three inches of diameter?
Yeah, so, and that, that again, I think, going back to the question of, are we talking to the nursery people, to what is available? And, you know, if we're going to say that you need to provide native vegetation, what do we need to do to sort of make sure the market has that available to do, and have that kind of discussion? But, yeah, that's exactly, that's what we're talking about with this.
I remember looking at table, table when I first saw it, and I couldn't figure out what was the reason for an upper limit. One of the, one of the towns said the largest possible, which made, made sense, what's the biggest that's available in the local nursery? But why say one to two inches, or two to three inches, why not say two inches or larger? In other words, why, why constrict to something smaller? Give them the minimum, but why put a maximum in?
You know, we can certainly write it that way, but I would, unless we have some really altruistic developers, you'll get the minimum, just because, from experience, when we've done that elsewhere in other areas.
I think that's really important, because if it's not written, we're going to, we're going to wind up with even tinier things that are not as likely to thrive.
Yeah, and that's why, how much caliper we don't want, for that very reason, two inches or larger, rather than, two inches or larger is reasonable.
Commissioner Tobias.
I was going to say, I don't think, it, it looks like at least table one on this says recommended tree size, so I don't, it does have the minimum included in the description, at least, I don't know if that's included on the table, but I think it's more just like recommending, you know, like at minimum, it should be up like at least this amount, but not necessarily, I don't think that would preclude them from doing like a larger tree if they said we wanted to transplant something that was, say, like four or five inches in caliber. You know, obviously, at that point, I think you're dealing with a much bigger tree and a much more advanced root system, but, I mean, I'm not an arborist, so I don't know how big we're talking at that point, but I imagine, like, the higher you get, the harder it is to transplant from existing root systems, so.
Well, I, you know, speaking from the experience of the area that I moved into, is a developer went out into the forest and he dug up trees, and he transplanted them to the backyards of almost all the houses that he built, and, and made sure that they survived. So, you know, you don't want to discourage someone from doing this. This is not a street tree I'm talking about, these are trees that make the house more saleable.
Yard trees.
Yard, and, and similar to that, we, and this is also really supported by our stormwater management manuals, is, you know, preservation of the existing topsoil layer on a site, meaning that you don't scrape it off and sell it. You know, you, if you need to scrape it off, keep it on the site, reuse it on the site as much as possible, or look for ways to not disturb that in the first place, you know, because recreating that is really difficult.
On the other hand, want to keep going?
So, again, if you have any questions, I'm preparing the packets for that first meeting in February, they're not going to be due February 1st, so if you have any things that you want to add to the list of discussion topics, or anything you want us to include as part of the presentation, let me know, and we'll include that for that process.
I'll throw in more.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I think we touched upon this when we were working with a consultant, and that's that the tree account, where I think we're looking under the new ordinance as having additional income to the tree account as a result of having some of these ordinances. But it seemed to me that the tree account should not be limited to being on public property. I think the tree account would also, if appropriate, be available on private property. If you're going to build a big tree account, let's look beyond just city-owned land and look at making something along the side of the golf course and putting fifty trees in there.
Privately-owned land. As long as the owner is willing to take them. We can't show up late at night and just start putting trees in. That's a, thank you for bringing that, but we'll definitely be talking more about that if we don't remind us, but there's a couple other things I'd like to add about tree accounts and what other things we should be probably thinking about. The first and climate mitigation plan that the council approved in 2021, their big emphasis on preservation of forests is, you know, there's urban-level forest, and then there's forest out in the county. One of the things that we've been thinking about is, and as supporting the plan, is in addition to looking for obvious opportunities within the city to plant trees, using a tree fund, whatever else we can, especially in those areas that didn't have a lot of trees planted in the first place, they have heat island effects, all kinds of other things, look for opportunities to contribute to preservation, or more probably adding to the forest lands out in the county that serve also a really big purpose and are much more inflexible or likely to survive and provide the habitat and all the, you know, climate mitigation benefits in a, in another area. And just another thing just to be aware of that is going through the legislature right now, is there is a bill that is in committee right now that is talking about allowing tree banks to be formed. And the primary driver, and this is where we talk about, you emphasize one thing, and you focus on that one thing, and you sort of don't realize the impacts everywhere else when you do that. The primary impact, the primary purpose of the tree bank is to provide, basically mandate to jurisdictions that, number one, the first option for tree preservation is paying into a tree bank, or planting trees somewhere else besides where the development is occurring, for the provision of affordable housing. Couple issues with that. That's great, from the affordable housing side, it doesn't, it doesn't help the jurisdictions, which also, you know, with climate change and urban forestry and all that's- and urban forestry and all that stuff, when you're allowing an entire site to be developed and no trees are planted, but it goes somewhere else. And in my mind, it's like, okay, we're going somewhere else and we're dealing with heat island effects somewhere else and we're creating a new one. That doesn't work. So just be aware that that's out there. We're tracking it. We're making polite comments about ways to tweak it. But, you know, I, what I don't want to do is we do all this and then the state says, guess what? You don't have to.
Hopefully, we'll, one, one of the, one of the things that I hope we can also do is, is, I don't know exactly how to word this, but open up ways where the city can more easily entertain innovative approaches to things. And I don't know what those might be. I'm concerned about that kicking the can down the road kind of a thing, like, you know, if we have a grove of trees and we're protecting it, it's already doing its thing there and now it can't do double if we now call it, you know, good for this other place that we destroyed. You know, so it's only doing its its first thing. So, you know, we can't, we've got to figure out, you know, some other ways. I think somebody brought up roof gardens and other kinds of ways of developing that, you know, help us overall, help us increase the overall vegetation and tree cover that we've got and and really that function that we're after, that forest function.
From my perspective, when we we were talking about, when we, the planning commission was going through the affordable housing ordinances in twenty and twenty-one, really it was like, we need to do a whole bunch of stuff. There's no one magic way to do this.
Right.
And the the thought being that if you do, if you provide enough options, if you provide enough opportunities to do something, you're going to get to your goal. And the hope is also, I think, we need to think about the same kind of thing when we come to thinking about the tree preservation and other ordinances, what other ways can we get at or incentivize or whatever, you know, and try to think a little bit beyond just put a fence around it and we're done.
Any other points for Brad? Oh, good, sorry, Commissioner Varela.
Ju- just one quick one. This is kind of more of a, a toss out there. I know we're trying to find all the possible ways to incentivize the developers. Is there a mechanism to allow the developer themselves to propose what would incentivize them so they have an opportunity to say, hey, I would like to do this instead? And maybe it's something we didn't consider, but then that can be viewed on a case by case basis and then potentially scale that up if they have a good idea, just steal it and use it for other, other aspects.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up. That's another, we, we've been very fortunate as part of the stakeholder process to have good involvement from the Master Builders Association as well as other, you know, environmental groups and a whole range of people. And that's really from the input that we've been getting from the master builders is look for ways of incentivizing and, you know, helping to make a positive income, a positive outcome occur through the process and have some flexibility put into the process. We're, we're trying to find the balance between being clear with the regulations so people know what is expected as well as if you could come up with an alternative plan, here's a process to follow to go through that. But your, your point is well taken.
Do you have more, Brad, on, on street trees? Any other, any other last call on item number ten?
For street trees.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Okay, it looks like our next meeting will be the fourteenth of February. That's our joint meeting with the tree board. And Brad kind of characterized that a little bit, but anything else you want to say about that one, Brad?
No, and again, so that means if you have your comments or any questions to me by the seventh of February, it'll be enough time for me to get a packet of the materials. Actually, if you could just slightly before that, that would be better, but.
Sooner is better.
Sooner would be much more helpful. If you judge by the way my week has gone so far that I haven't actually done the thing that I told myself I needed to get done, even started.
And your new staff will be there helping out.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right. Good discussion, everybody. Let's see, any other final points before we, before I take a motion to adjourn? Go ahead.
Are this meeting really on a bell once, Tim?
I think it is. Is that the first Tuesday or second Tuesday?
I've already had negotiations and discussions.
Can you give me my wife's number? How about that?
All right, we'll stand by in case there are adjustments. Other than that, and then our next one is two weeks after that, whatever that is, the twenty-eighth, so. I don't, we usually don't hold meetings in the off, off Tuesdays for planning condition, right? Well, we could be having a lot of chocolate and roses here and. Commissioner Tavares.
I'm motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. Second? Okay, I think Mr. Schumacher beat you to it, but good, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any final comments? All in favor of adjourning tonight? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Awesome. Have a great night. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hey, everyone.
You too.